Hey, Alicia.
Hey, good evening. How are you?
Good.
Everybody on the phone? A little slow. I think it's seven. L M C T V, are we good to go?
Just, just a heads up that Patrick Blanchard, who's a VP from our New York City office, may be joining in just to observe.
Okay, great. He'll be very welcome. All set? Okay, great. Welcome, everybody. Start with, I will motion to open the meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Okay, a couple of quick administrative items and then we'll get into the main agenda. So this is the planning board meeting, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. You can note the fire exits at doors on each side of the building. And please turn off your electronic devices. First, I will take attendance, which all of the members of the planning board are present. And we have our land use coordinator, Brittany O'Neil. And then on the phone, we have Teresa Backner, the planning board attorney. See, John Keller, the village consulting engineer. Alicia Moore, village consulting planner, and Susan Oakley, landscape design consultant. I think that's everybody. Okay, and then briefly before we start. This is our first meeting of kind of the new cycle, so we have a couple of new members. We have one member who has left the planning board since our last meeting, which is Kathy Seval, who was priorly, prior to the chair. So I just wanted to say that Kathy did an amazing job running this board. It's a very, very well organized board. I really appreciated overlapping for a year with her. So thank her for her service. She really cares a lot about this village and the work that we do. So that's very much appreciated. Cindy, I think that you might want to read a few words from a very nice email that we got from Kathy.
Thanks, Seamus, and congratulations on chair and welcome to Mallory and Bill. Kathy wrote us an email, so I just wanted to read this for the record. So I want to thank you all for your work and assistance that made my three years as chairperson successful and a lot, lot less stressful than it could have been. Collectively and individually, you all are one of the best, if not the best teams I've worked with in my almost fifty-year career. It was my honor and privilege to work with each one of you. You are all very good at what you do and extremely professional doing it. Please keep up the good work. Mammarinek needs you. I'm also proud of the work we did and how we created one of the best planning boards Mammarinek ever had. I'm not sure what I'll do next, but rest assured, I'll be busy at something. No ride off into the sunset for me. My time and talent will be useful somewhere else. My best wishes to all of you for a happy holiday season and healthy and happy new year, Kathy.
Thanks, Cindy. And then we have two new members. So welcome to Bill Binsner at the end here and to Mallory and Chen.
Thank you.
And so I think with that, we are ready to go. The first topic is the approval of minutes. So we have the minutes from October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, which was our last meeting, believe it or not. I have one comment, so I will start with that, which is I believe that there's pretty much a typo on page two where Cindy's comments. So there's the sentence that said, Ms. Goldstein noted that a tree protection plan has been submitted, but I believe that should be has not been submitted. A tree preservation plan needs to be submitted.
Well, they're two different things. So I think they did one of them. They did the protection, but not the preservation of what I meant, and I think.
No, you're right. I think that's correct.
Okay, that's right. Later, you said that, so.
Okay, so then no, no comments from me. Anyone, anyone else?
No comments from me.
Okay, so I will motion that we adopt or approve, whichever is the right action, the minutes from the October twenty-sixth meeting.
Second.
And we'll vote. So I vote yes, Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bill? Well, you can abstain.
I should abstain.
Abstain.
I'll abstain as well, thank you.
And I think three votes.
Yep.
It's good enough. Okay. The next item is an applicant. So do we have folks from one thousand two Cove Road here? So if you could come on up, I think to the podium. Please use the mic because we are televised and we need that for the audio. There's another mic there if it's needed. I think it could be used. And so this is your first visit to the planning board. And so I think we could start, if you'd like to, with a brief presentation.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, for the staff and council. My name is David Gussel, and I have your record for this project at one thousand two Cove Road. I'm joined here tonight by my partner Frank DiAgati, who will also assist with providing additional background and supporting information on the project. Just by way of background, the applicant is proposing to install a mini twenty-foot by forty-foot in-ground granite pool in the rear yard of the property along adjacent terraces. The rear yard with the pool is proposed is an open lawn area, which is fully screened with pre-existing trees and shrubbery of the neighboring properties. The property and surrounding areas do fall within a FEMA special floodplain hazard area, which base flood elevation is established at two feet, I'm sorry, twelve feet above sea level. Given that the proposed disturbance for pool construction is proposed, Village Code, chapters three hundred and three forty-two, are the main sources for regulatory clients, in addition to the twenty-twenty year state records. The applicant has received an appreciation of new commentary from prepared from consultant planner A K R F, consultant engineer Kelly Sessions, and landscape consultant engineer Terran Bell of Land Design. In an effort to expedite today's conversation, we did prepare a written letter to the board ahead of this meeting along with a full set of revised plans incorporating commentary received from the consultants. The plan before you contains the most recent revisions and addresses feedback from all the consultants. At this point, we are prepared to present the project, key design elements, and welcome through for joining. The subject property for one thousand two Cove Road is an oversized parcel located in the R twenty Sonny district. The lot size for this parcel is thirty thousand square feet and contains a single family residence of thirty-five hundred forty-two square feet. Developed lot features for the property include a rear masonry terrace, attached screened-in porch, raised deck, paved driveway, and attached garage, which both could accommodate, accommodate Wall Street Park and the four cars. The grade of the property is fairly level with a modest slope ranging from north to south. And it's meticulously landscaped with perimeter trees, shrubs, gardens, and open lawn areas. The owner is proposing, as you see in the second page, the owner is proposing to provide additional pepper green plantings, the privacy screening along the northerly face of the proposed pool. Soil classification for this property is determined as hydrologic group B, which is consistent with well-trained soils. As the project is located within a developed residential neighborhood, a survey of the surrounding areas and jazz mapping does not indicate the presence of any wetlands or environmental critical areas. All of the property is, however, located within a FEMA special floodplain hazard area. The dwelling for the first floor is above established base flood elevations. The proposed project does not provide for any grade changes. And all of their proposed features will be placed at existing grade and all excess soils generated when the project will be moved and disposed of on site. The pool equipment will be located above base flood elevation with pre-board as required by code. Specified on page one of the plan are a full set of settlement and road control measures, including contractor acknowledgement and certification to ensure that all precautionary measures are in place to protect the municipal road, right-of-life, and adjacent properties. As the subject property contains open lawn areas, most of which are in the middle and rear setbacks, staging for equipment and equipment and structural materials should not be initiated as work progresses. The proposed settlement and road, the road control plan does provide all the requisite housekeeping site protections, including cell fencing, tree protections, concrete washout areas, and temporary contractor access driveways. Keeping with Village Code, on page two, a conceptual plan to mitigate surface water runoff from increased impervious cover, coverages, coupled with seasonal pool drawdown, is developed and provided. As the project calls for a net increase of twenty-two hundred fifty-four square feet, a design including four Coltech three thirty XL HD infiltration units will be sized for the full pool and full patio coverage for the standard twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour design storm. Percolation testing has been performed in September preliminary to, to guys with design, however we do it, anticipate and expect full deep test and percolation testing to be performed at a future date and confirmed by Village Consulting Engineer. The proposed stormwater modeling as shown on page three is very, is consistent with New York State U C's design standards for stormwater management. The primary location for drainage systems are in the rear yard. Setbacks with overflow connections provided to the village municipal drainage system as suggested by Taylor Sessions. Lastly, the plans to, on page one, provide owner acknowledgement for post-construction maintenance requirements and responsibility as required by the village, which shall include post-construction as-built drainage survey, covenants, and detailed maintenance activities and frequencies along certified certification inspections. The project as proposed means all Sony fault and dimensional setbacks and does not require any basements. And at this point, we turn it over to the rest of the board.
Great. Thank you. So I think what we might do is go and hear from our consultants unless anybody has a quick comment at the moment. Okay. So then Alicia from A K R F, perhaps you can go through your memo quickly for us, please?
Sure. Yeah, as the applicant noted, there aren't really any dimensional issues that we, that we picked up. As a pool, it has to be compliant with chapter three hundred. So we, we ran it against that table and found it compliant. So no issues with, with that. Yeah, and then the only other two things that we noted are referring to B A R and suggesting that it's a type-two under secur.
Okay, one, one question I had is you identified a lighting plan. What, what should we expect is it's something that we don't currently have, you think, or confirmation that there's no lighting to be added?
Right, so, I mean, there is no lighting proposed. So there was no issue of whether it's compliant. So the comment is just if lighting is proposed, that it needs to include the fixture details and photometrics.
And do you know, is that right? No lighting proposed?
That is correct. There's no lighting proposed.
Okay, any questions from the planning board for Alicia? All right. Maybe we'll go to Susan next if you're on, I think. Hello, Susan. Can, do you mind briefly just summarizing your memo as well?
Not at all. I'd be happy to. The, there are no trees proposed for removal, so no need for a tree preservation plan. I did mention in my memo that there are many trees ranging from twenty to thirty-inch diameter breast height that are surround, surrounding the area of disturbance. And that the drip line of the trees needs to be protected. And I saw the most recent submission. And that still needs some attention because, as you can see from the photograph that I included in the, my memo, the trees are very mature trees and their drip lines far exceed what was marked on the most recent submission. So there will be extensive overlap between the existing trees on the property and where the line of, the area of disturbance is. So that needs to be relooked at. In addition, the, there's proposed landscaping for screening and around the pool area. And I mentioned in the memo also that a plant schedule that includes the botanical name, common name, size, and planting quantity, and that is also keyed to the plants on the landscape plan will need to be included, in addition to a landscape plan, a separate landscape plan. And also, as usual, the focus on native plant species is always a plus.
And I don't know if you had a chance to see the memo or any reactions, but please.
Yeah, my partner Frank and I, we did review the memo along with our clients, property owners. And I guess the, we would like for a little bit guidance on what's required, required by code for screening as the property is fully landscaped, very well maintained. There's a lot of mature shrubs, trees, and natural screening already pre-existing. And we thought to add one privacy wall screening from the northerly vantage point facing south, where there may have been a gap in screening. So I guess we'd like to hear back on what actually physically required, but that we provide an efficient warning offer.
There's plant material indicated on. I'm not sure what the sheet number is. The, the, yes, that you can see the plant material there in green. Because you are proposing plant material, a plant schedule listing the plants needs to be included on a landscape plan?
Okay, so you're looking to identify what we are proposing as, as to having, have a requisite requirement for things as per Village Code. So it's a little fiery.
Yeah, I think Susan, let me know if you agree on those thrown here, but I think what I'm, what we sometimes see, it's, it's a table, right? It's a, it's a species and it's how many are being planted. That's consistent with the, the drawings. Is that right?
And, and the relative size.
Yeah.
Yes, it, it, it lays out exactly what needs to be included in my memo.
Okay.
It's a table, you know, table, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yep. And then, and then I think the other guide in Susan is more clear. Protection of drip lines in the drawings is something that you, there's a deficiency at the moment, you think?
Yes, if you go back to the previous plan that was up right before this one, I, I believe it's the preceding plan. Yes, so the, the very, the very bright green circles are the trees that are surrounding the area, the limits of disturbance. And you can see they, in this iteration, they have placed a ring, a black ring around the trees. But that black ring does not reflect the drip line. And if you look to the right of the drawing, you'll see you have on that plan exactly where the, the drip line of a tree should be placed. So you have all the information on the plan that's required by the planning board, but your drawing does not reflect the, the tree protection at the drip line of each tree. And, and I often recommend that it needs to be done on site because every tree, the, the canopy of every tree is different, whether it's a deciduous tree, an evergreen tree. And, you know, again, going back to that image, it's one of the reasons I included it in the memo is so that the planning board could see just how large and mature those trees are. So my guess is that the limits of disturbance will have to be shifted based on the protection of those trees, the root systems of those trees.
Sure, if I may comment on that, typically what my partner Frank and I do for our clients is we have a pre-construction meeting with a contractor. We will help assist establish seven of those road control measures so that the project is fully compliant with building standards and is following the plan. We'd be happy to add dimensions to the tree. The tree protections showing the offset from drip line crown from the trunk if that serves, by the radial distance. And the, the plan you see before is more for schematic purposes to indicate where these trees are to be protected. But we'd be happy to add dimensions and show exactly where the crown projects to and where the trip line projects for the establishment of the tree.
Just as an example, the tree that is just above the washout area, the tree root, the, the canopy of that tree will, and if you protect it at the drip line, that will be directly in the way of that washout area where you will have major heavy construction vehicles and therefore that washout area will probably have to be moved in order to protect that deciduous, large deciduous tree that is there. So it's not simply drawing it on the plan, it's how it can affect other elements and the layout of construction and the process.
So, thank you.
Planning board, any, any comments for Susan around that topic? Okay. And then John Keller, I think the last report we have is yours. If you can go through your important elements of your memo, please.
Sure, certainly. Good evening. The majority of our comments were about the stormwater pollution prevention plan and the floodplain that encompasses the majority of the site. In regard to the stormwater mitigation, the applicant's proposing to mitigate stormwater through infiltration. There are a number of points we included in our memo of information the the applicant should provide on the drawing to to address the issues that the village typically requires on such a stormwater plan. It sounded in the applicant's presentation that they may have addressed many of those issues since receiving our memo. However, one, well, two items, the, the deep hole testing and the per, percolation tests to size and confirm that the, that the system will comply with the New York State Design Manual for Stormwater should be done at this time and not at a later date the applicant has been proposing. I, I, I believe to perform those tests at the time of construction. And we really need it be that information before we approve the project. In regard to the floodplain, we didn't find sufficient information on the grading plan to really understand whether we were losing any volume within the floodplain itself with the construction of the project. So we requested that additional topographic information be provided and a compensatory stor, storage study performed to show that if there is any raising of the grade within the yard areas, which are all within the floodplain, that an equivalent compensatory storage be provided to offset that increase in elevation. And those were our, our major points on the application.
That's, thanks, John. Yeah, I, I believe that the applicant has replied to many of those. So probably an efficient process will be for you to review their response to your memo subsequently. But if, if you'd like to respond to any of those, and I know you've seen the memo, it sounds like John has not seen your responses.
Yeah, sure. So, so, so John, just to respond to your two critical comments. As far as, we were expecting to perform deep test, excavation, and percolation testing to be witnessed by yourself or your staff. And we will coordinate that inspection with the village.
And in the, in the village, we do not witness the testing with you.
Okay.
We rely, you're certifying it with your, with your stamp and signature.
Okay.
We'll, we'll accept your, your information.
Thank you. We will schedule that. Hopefully have those results for the next presentation. And confirm that our design that we presented before you is either confirmed or adjusted according based on the results. As far as the FEMA floodplain concerned with loss of flood storage, this last revision, we did provide clarification on, on, on both, you know, sheets one and two. And I think in our written presentation to the board right now, there's no proposed raising of any grades whatsoever. The pool will be constructed flush with existing grade. Patio will be flushed with existing grade. The plans have statements, you know, throughout where there's no adjustment in grade and the contract is to remove and dispose of all accumulated soils in excess offsite. So I think that part, we tried to clarify that and hopefully it is with this last revision.
Good, very good.
We did provide a table of, of estimated excavation volumes, which will guide the, the oversight of soil removals. Hopefully that the number of drops and the volume of soils, you know, generated will track our estimated volumes of what should be removed and disposed of more for guidance. And lastly, as the project is within a FEMA special flood hazard area, we do propose raising the pool equipment above the, you know, the base of elevation and including pre-board as required by the village. So I think those comments and those responses will probably key all this in the number edit that we picked up on.
Good.
And one, one confirmatory question from me, the original comment was that the proposal was to include net fill in the floodplain, and that's, that's not correct, right?
There's no fill in the floodplain. Other than the pool structure itself, which will offset the excavated soils, it's not, please don't change. It's hard for you to choose me as this. We did propose that.
With the, with the original submission, this was a sufficient proposed grade shown that I could tell exactly what your elevation was that you were proposing to to cite the pool and the deck.
Okay, we did provide a, a proposed spot elevation of the pit back in the corner, which is consistent with the actual grade where the pool should be placed. For construction purposes, it'll, it'll be cleared to the contractor. It will also.
Okay, thanks, John. Any comments from members of the planning board?
Couple of things. So we do need, this project does need a SWIP. Is that right, John?
Yes. But the SWIP, the SWIP can be this, the plan set itself. It doesn't have to be a report.
Okay, I think normally we've asked for a report. I, I mean, it still has to comply with chapter two ninety-four. Is that right?
Yes, but all the information can be placed on the drawings themselves. Of what the applicant has done.
That just makes us, hard for us novices to go through, but you will, you will guide us through it at the next meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And so because this is in a special floodplain hazard area, is there anything other that has to be done besides raising the pool equipment to above twelve feet above grade? Is that, that's the only implication for this?
Yes, and make sure that you're not losing any flood volume in the application. They will, will have to file a they'll have to file a flood, floodplain development permit with the building department prior to construction.
Was that in our, our information? Okay, I missed that. And it was also item ten, I think. John, where you commented that, that they need to do the floodplain development permit.
Yes.
And was that evaluated by you?
It's evaluated by us in our review. It's approved by the building department prior, prior to their starting work on the project.
Okay, so, so that. Okay, so, so that.
Issued simultaneously in the building.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks, everybody. And so I think. The next step for today, unless, because we're gonna probably get through a couple of just closing out things. Unless there's any other questions that you have for us or comments to make, I think what we'll do is type this for seeker. And then you can come back with some of the responses to this and additional information.
Sure, yeah, we'd be happy to, we submit the buy stories and prepare for the next presentation.
Okay, because despite the location, near Delancey Cove, this is not H C Z M, I don't believe, right?
But they have B A R, it looks like. Can we send, do we send them to B A R at this point?
Yeah, Alicia or Teresa, I think our next step would be to type this for seeker ourselves, but where, what's next for the application?
If you go ahead and type it for seeker, then refer it to B A R, that would, that would be the best approach.
Okay, and the recommendation, Alicia, here, pretty straightforward project really, is type two, correct?
Yep.
So can we do a combined motion to type as type two and recommend? Refer to B A R?
Yes.
Yep.
So I will so move.
Second.
Okay, and I vote yes, Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And.
Yes.
Okay. I think that that closes the application for us for today.
I do have one more question. I guess procedurally. Would it be possible for us to go to B A R first before coming back to this board to address their concerns, flush them out?
I think from our perspective, that's probably preferred, but I would definitely Teresa or Alicia weigh in here if there's anything we should consider, but.
No, I think that's perf- perfectly fine. The only, the only thing I would say you've got to be careful of here is. You're gonna be changing your plan to address the drip line issue, so just make sure that you. That you address that and still answer John's comments. Regarding the stormwater, because sometimes they feed off each other a little bit, so. Try to move that forward as you're going to B A R as well.
Yeah, I think because of the fact that we have to perform the test and percolation, you know, field testing, weather permitting. Having a little bit of extra time between ordnings might be beneficial.
The layout stays the same, that's all they're looking at. So if the, visually it remains the same, you know, whatever you do change, then it's okay.
Yeah.
The changes that we receive on the plan would really be the site protections at this point. The proposed design features are fixed, there's no changes.
And if there were any changes, you would just have to go back to the B A R set of time.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, thanks so much for your time. Yeah, helpful presentation. Thanks.
Yeah, you can leave that on the podium.
Okay. Next on the agenda is hundred and twenty-nine, hundred and twenty-three prospect of coming back. So this is an application that we've seen once, I believe. Right, hi. And there's been a few changes, so I think if, why don't we start? If you want to kind of summarize your memo or point out a couple of the things that have progressed since we last saw the application.
Good evening, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Kristen Motel, I'm a partner with the law firm, Peter, on behalf of the applicant here. Congratulations. Our full team is here tonight, so we have Freddie Green from representing the applicant. Pierre Sarazin, Sarazin Architects, Michael Stein from Hudson Engineering, At Pop, Environmental Land Solutions. And Dan Panessa, who's our construction manager from Allied Construction. And Brian Dempsey, the traffic engineer from DTS Providence. There's been a couple new team members here since last time. We were initially before you in September and received a. Round of comments from the planning board as well as the consultants, so we've taken the last few months to really digest that feedback and make some amendments to the project. Just to kind of refresh your recollection, there are two lots here, one twenty-nine and one thirty-three, we're proposing to merge them. The lots currently have two residential dwellings on them, a total of three dwelling units actually, but two structures. We're proposing to demolish them and construct a four-story multifamily building with thirteen units. So eight one bedrooms, five two bedrooms. There'll be fully compliant parking on the ground floor, no units on the ground floor. And the project will fully be zoning compliant, it's not within a flood zone. And it does incorporate a number of green elements that I'll have Pierre run through in a little more detail, such as green roofs, solar panels, high efficiency. Heating and cooling and new stormwater management infrastructure. So the last time we were, we were before you, we did not have a traffic engineer retained yet. We do have Brian on board and he provided a traffic study that contemplates the traffic impacts of the project. Including that there will be no noticeable impact on the roadway. And I'll have him explain a little bit more of that in a few minutes, as well as looking at the construction impacts. Because that was a concern of the board members last time we were here, the impact of construction given the proximity here. To this building as well as the, the library, theater and Movernick Avenue. We provided additional green building details. There was also a street state modification, so we pushed the building back three feet from the street line to accommodate for additional plantings. Along, and landscaping along the street. There are no setback requirements in the C two district for this type of building. So initially, there, there was no setback, but we've moved it back three feet. And we also provided additional details from the landscaping plans. There are new trees slated to be removed. And we are now fully complying with the new tree law the village has and we have a replanting plan in place. And in terms of SECR, I believe last time in September, this board circulated intent to be lead agency. So given that, the amount of time that's gone by, I believe people all are serving as lead agency and it's an unlisted action, but I know Alicia will. Chime in on that too. So, you know, procedurally, I think it makes sense right now to turn it over to Pierre. He'll run through some of the amendments to the plans and, you know, then we'll, we'll have Michael Stein, Brian and Matt just kind of do the same. We can take questions and then respond to any outstanding comments from your consultants. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Good to see everybody again. For the record, I'm Pierre Sarazin, Sarazin Architecture. If we could get sheet eight two oh one up on the screen, that is the ground floor. Floor plan. Just kind of focus in on, on what's been, what's different than the set of drawings. At that last meeting, there was, you know, there were some suggestions of moving the building back. We did so. If you can see the bubbled area in the front. We. There we go. Yep, so we, we pushed the building back three feet. That's pretty much the most that we could push the building back. Because in the rear, we do have these two parking spaces in the back that would be. Very difficult to navigate if we push the building back anymore. Even looking at this again, the bicycle rack, probably not a, an ideal. A location now that we moved the building back, so we're gonna, I think we're gonna find a better spot for this. And, and on this plan, we're also showing as far as what's changed and the charging station. Think we're gonna try and get a little more granular on some of the sustainable items, because I think there's a lot of questions. As well.
And, and I think it's important to the special permit aspect of this, of this application.
Understood, okay. If we can jump to the roof plan, which is sheet eight two oh four. Again, we've added some, some sustainable elements and illustrated where those are located. We did speak generally that we were gonna have a green roof, but this really illustrates, you know, the area that's being provided as a green roof. We also have a V R F system, with there are condensers up on that roof and we'll have a canopy. That's gonna also have photovoltaics. On top of that, so we're doing. And we're illustrating again, just a little more granular on how that rooftop's gonna be. There's also some, some more detail on the landscape and on the roof that Matt had a walk into as well. And then that next slide, which is eight two oh five, we added to the package. I believe we mentioned this the last time, but we are gonna be going for lead silver certification. We're still speaking to consultants that are gonna be on board to help us get there. Again, the green roof, as we showed you on that last slide, we're using V R F systems. We did look into geothermal. Our M E P engineer feels like the V R F system is actually more energy efficient for this application. And that's the system that we're choosing. We've got photovoltaics on the roof, we're using sustainable materials. We've got L E D lighting with some energy saving controls, i.e. the common areas. So have occupancy sensors, et cetera, so they turn off. We're doing high efficiency windows and doors. Additional insulation, we're even willing to commit to twenty percent more than in the New York State Energy Code, which is. Pretty strict. We have, we've got a charging station that we, we show. Energy Star appliances, I suppose racks on sites. Water sense certified plumbing fixtures, water test label products. Et cetera, et cetera. You know, when we get into the detail with the silver. There's, there's a lot of companies out there that say they're sustainable, but having kind of a third party really verify whether that's true or not. And get the proper point system applied to our project. A lot of these materials that will be selected. We're just gonna make sure that we. Silver applications. And then on that last sheet, eight nine hundred, we updated the rendering. Push the building back three feet from that front setback line and we added some more landscaping to the front of the building. Yeah, that's the night rendering, which we didn't update yet, but that one, that is an update. So, yep, and Matthew, did I answer any questions?
One, one quick question for me, what's the timing for knowing the lead silver certification outcome?
So we're committing, we're committing to being lead silver, as far as what products we're gonna use where, we haven't determined that. But we are committing to.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I think, Chris, you have more folks to bring up, yeah.
I just have a quick question. The parking garage, will that be open or gated or how?
So it actually has to be gated.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking for, you know, some gate that's, you can see through a little bit, but it's, it's still not completely opaque. We haven't selected the gate yet, but we also have screening on the side, you can see it on the rendering, we've got some I E on the side. I'm sorry, in the front, but the side, on the, the left-hand side of the render. And then along the back, you've got some screen that's going.
Good evening. Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering, we're the engineer to work in the project. Our office had previously revised our plans with the new building locations to provide stormwater mitigation. We provided a collection system to collect the water between the parking area and the garage as well as roof areas. We're putting that through a mechanical separator to basically provide water quality for that water. And that goes, leads into an attenuation gallery, which falls onto the water and slowly releases it over time. It is a sixty linear feet of thirty-six inch pipe. That pipe then, that outlet pipe from that system then connects into the village's system. Looking at this rendering just to the right of the building, it's approximately in sidewalk area. As part of addressing the Kelly Sessions comments to verifying the depth and invert of the pipe. Exiting that manhole, I actually opened it up, but I wasn't about to climb down, it's about ten feet deep. Can't see exactly how large the pipe is from that point. So we're gonna work with the village to determine the sizing of that. But it, it, it goes down, in our understanding, it goes down directly down to the river. We had some, a few additional comments of routing piping through the building. Going through the basement, just the, looking for additional details. Or actually details of going, I guess, penetrations, pipe hangers in the basement, had the pipe used within the basement. So we're gonna work with the project team to make sure we, for the next mission, we add all those to, to the application. We also had a few other comments of location of walls, they're approximately to neighboring properties. So we're just gonna go back and see whatever, make sure whatever details we need to submit, we'll submit in any coordination we need with that property as well as. Jason, property owners. Part of also will be submitted at their request was phasing, phasing drawings. That basically go through is what needs to be done via broken down for basic construction. They're looking for some additional verification of what of deliveries and, and material deliveries. So we're gonna go through it again with the project team, make sure we get all this addressed.
The, the pipe that goes to the river?
Yes.
Can you just talk me through how that's relevant? I mean, obviously putting water in the river matters around here, so what's the big picture?
Primary concern in Mr. Keller, correct me if I'm wrong, is the size of the piping that's leading that manhole. Making sure that's about the size where we're connecting it to for it to stand.
Okay.
I, I just have a follow-up question about that. So is there any mechanism? Should there be? A really high level of rainfall? Is there any kind of mechanism that would divert the water or any plan so that?
Well.
Because if it's going right to the river.
Well, part of what our study did is look at the, the site in the existing condition and then the proposed condition. And making sure that the flows that are leaving the site for all the storm events were going to be lower than the existing conditions.
But the existing conditions are residential, is that what you mean? Like what's there now?
Whatever, whatever the development is on the site right now, with the buildings on the site, we're increasing the impervious areas, we're gonna have more flows coming off. We're making sure that we not only replicate, but that we're reducing the flows and how quickly the water is leaving the site. That's the whole idea, the intenuation system, we're holding on to it. And so think of like a fire hose going into a bathtub.
Okay.
You can go really fast, but you only have a small outlet.
So are you saying even though, I mean, obviously there's many more water use than compared to three residential. Houses. So you're saying even though there's increased water use, the intenuation system would, would slow it down?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
And I believe our last other comment was about. Sign off from water departments, sewer department, health department for sewer usage. We're in the process of just finalizing the estimated flows, so we can submit to their offices.
Do we know how old those sewer pipes are? I mean, I know the village is going through a slip lining process, but. We're going from three units to multiple of that. So is that part of what you'll be checking out?
Yeah, again, and we're gonna be reviewing with the village, a D W to determine pipe sizes and age. Depth wise, I was very, actually very surprised when I opened it to see this location to be at such a great depth. And the manhole itself was actually precast, so that it's relatively new compared to.
The manhole was precast, but we don't know what the pipes are.
If, if that was new, it's likely that the rest is, is newer.
So when you find that out, can you bring that back to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Good evening, Matthew Poplant, you're an architect of our mental institutions, Norwalk. I prepared the landscaping plan, and some of the bigger main changes are, is that we shifted to building that. Three feet from the, the street, making it some additional room in the front of the building, it's a plant. We also kind of coordinated the planning more with the building architecture. We also kind of coordinate the planning more with the building architecture. Another uh area right here, we added a screen fence, there's a detail here. With the Ivy growing up, that's a Virginia creeper in English Ivy. Um so they can major change was moved to building that. Another uh change was where we added off. Offsite to the neighborhood property in tree here, one back here, yeah, the two oaks. This tree right here is pretty big planting bed right there. It's on the street. There's no overhead utility lines, so it's a great spot for now. Um also back here, uh another two, those back here are J area, so. Pretty happy about that. Typically, there's overhead utility lines. In this case, there isn't. We did take off some of the uh non-native invasive species that were kind of under here. Usually like you said, where I think it's uh gonna be a tough condition, maybe something aggressive, but I can, we took that off, we added. Uh place them at the two ferns, New York fern and dated here for uh up on the roof. Uh we use mainly native species. Uh there's two trees, uh that winter can cough hard in the the roof. Uh just, it will be irrigated slightly, but the plants are mainly drought uh resistant, drought tolerant. Against the winter can cough hard, uh we planted the post plant we're up there mainly for fragrance, also good for insects. We got a pipe which, actually a little bit of bear, so. Within the beds and then up on the roof, it on the uh. On this uh plan right here, the brass is reused, our metal presses are needed, switch brass in a little piece step. So I think that's it, uh quickly if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I think, I wonder if we should just talk for a moment about the offsite trees, cause I think it'll come up again in a moment and Susan, feel free to. Help us with the conversation, but um I I haven't seen that before and it obviously has some implications of, you know, do you really have the ability to? Make sure that, you know, if they don't get removed and that they're cared for. Um so it might be just be something that we need to consider, cause I don't know that there's much to discuss about it, except that that's your proposal and we'd love to see more. I'd love to see more trees planted generally.
Yeah, normally we've been, we've been requesting more, especially street trees, not shrubs, not bushes, but trees. Um a- and we have been required that they requiring that they be maintained in perpetuity. So there's a, there's a affirmative. Action that you would need to take to water these plants on somebody else's property and as Seamus mentioned, that can be problematic. Um you know, because you have no rights over that and then people could take it down and then you're in violation of your site plan and and it's a big mess. So is there, since you've moved the building back, is there any space along that three feet that you freed up to put in real trees?
I would say you can't get a real tree in three feet. Uh just, no, the. One of the largest tree right in here is existing is a silver maple. It's a, you know, a very, very poor condition, you know, we came back in a year, that tree probably wouldn't be, you know, on the site anymore. Uh some of the other trees back through here, uh black locusts heavily covered with vines. Um so they're not in great spot, stay great shape. No, no, again, make it, uh try not to squeeze the trees in here, uh too tight just to make up the quantities.
No.
So. So if the applicant is open to this, what we've done on some other situations, if it, you really can't find a place to put a tree. Um rather than putting it on an adjacent property is to basically donate to the village and put a tree. Let the village put a tree somewhere else that's more appropriate.
Um.
We did look out, actually, I did look out front of this building, there's spaces around this building where a tree should be put.
I think they're also thinking about residential streets, especially in in Washington Bill and areas like that that just don't have, you know, the the tree cover. You know, the relief from the heat, so I think let's keep that open because I I'm also nervous about.
I'd love to see that tree get planted. I think it's a good part of the project. Let's not necessarily lose it, but just trying to, um you know.
So if we remove this tree at about two feet, that's where the bottom. If he had, it was property.
So maybe that works. Okay, we can be flexible.
Who's, whose property is it on now?
Uh that's the chief's bank property. It's the the parking lot that turns to transfer here. Again, if we move that just slightly over, then it's almost in the center of the landscape that.
And it's on the sidewalk and it's good. Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Brian Dempsey from BTS Providence. We did the traffic and parking study. Um I was not. Earlier hearing, this was given sense and it has been reviewed by HRF. They were. In agreement with it, but would did come up from the previous. Um board meetings, um and it's mentioned in Mr. Keller's uh comment letter is about. Um pedestrian issues and issues during construction and we have some else here will talk more detail about some of the construction. Aspects, but from a traffic and pedestrian standpoint. Uh as we state in our report and shown on the Hudson Engineering Plans. There will be about eighteen weeks where the sidewalk will be closed in front of the site. Um so there'll be proper signage to American Avenue. And on the other side of the site to use the crosswalks at Library Lane and at American Avenue. So there will be ways people will be able to cross safely. After that eighteen week period, which is when you're doing the foundation and some of the other work in front there, the um. What's called pedestrian bridge, it's not really a bridge, it's sort of like you'd see. In Manhattan or such, with it covered, has a covering over the pedestrian walk. Um so the additional construction is why not, the pedestrians could still maintain uh use of the sidewalk there. Uh if for a temporary time, there has to be a truck that's in front of the site. Depending upon how the lineage ends up being and how much width it is, there would be a flag personnel. Um to control it, plus, all this will be to, you know, delivered to the building department for their review before. Uh any building permits are issued, plus we'll also be meeting with the police departments, that's these departments right here also. Um to coordinate anything that they would require.
Was there some kind of conversation about, I'm sorry, uh uh about. I was a little bit confused in some of the memos that the street wasn't gonna be open, but then it was gonna be like a whole lane was gonna be closed off and did that? Complicate the pedestrian walkway? If you're actually, you have a big chunk of street open?
From our study or?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, this would only be relevant during the construction phase, but I thought that there were, there were conflicting pieces of information. Like on the Keller Sessions memo, it was talking about um referring to the fact that. There would be no closure of traffic lanes along Prospect. But then in comment six, there's a reference to um. You need a road opening permit, so it seems to me like the roads are gonna be opened. At some point, maybe not a whole lane full of closures.
The Hudson Engineering Plans.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know how you coordinate that with with pedestrian safety.
Well, again, that when during the road open crawl, we likely be when the uh those eighteen weeks of when that sidewalk would be closed.
Okay.
And that would be.
And then you.
The other thing is, if there is a truck, it has to be there for delivery or whatever. And it is gonna be there for, you know, at the time, there will be flag personnel. To move the.
So will you be shutting down the sidewalk on Prospect right in front of the site? And then the what, the where does the pedestrian walkway go in relation to the front of the building? On Prospect, you you're gonna let them stay on that side of the road and?
Pedestrian bridge goes in?
Yeah.
Would be right on top of the side.
Okay.
So I think for some time it's closed, you gotta be on the other side of the street.
Right, you're gonna have to be completely off of it. Okay.
Toothpaste is the first phase they cross the street, go down the other side and the second phase.
They can just stay in front.
Yeah, so there is a crosswalk right there, at Library Lane, and then the crosswalk.
Okay.
But when you're building, digging the foundation such, then it's not paper, the pedestrian could be there, so. The adjacent properties would be able to still walk to their. You know, to their properties from. The respective sides. But in front of the site will have to be closed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, that that was great. Thank you. That's that what you guys have prepared?
That's what we prepared, but we can respond to any additional comments from board members or. I just have a question. I saw um in one slide that there were solar panels on the roof. Oh, can I just see that again?
Sure, you, uh the stairs and architecture plans.
It's the roof plan, hold on. Uh so that's A two O four. A two before the rear, you know, so it's at the rear, we we have our condensers. And then on hu- on top of the condensers, it would be the photovoltaic or the solar.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts?
We we haven't calculated, but we can, we can certainly have an answer for it at the next meeting.
And will that only generate um energy with it for just that building?
Yes, done. And if there's a surplus that goes back to grid. But it will be used in that internal, we'll see for the.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, could you just, I'm I'm still not clear where the panels goes, like on the gray area there at the top?
Yes, that's correct. On the gray area, it's a little difficult because they're on top of the condenser, but there's some.
If you see the far to the top right, it says photovoltaic.
Okay, that's a relatively small area. I imagine you're only gonna generate a very partial uh.
That that uh again, it's we just, we opted for the green roof in lieu of uh, but you know, that could. Modify that slightly if the photovoltaics are preferred, uh but I can't have both.
And and just while we're on the subject, I heard you mention that you would commit to being lead certified. Sorry, that I heard you uh say that you would commit to being lead certified, that you know, lead certified, there's, you know. Big long laundry list of things you can choose from to get points, including the nature of the site and offsite things or all kinds of things. Um is, is there any way we can have some better understanding of what green? Things you actually are going to be installing, you know.
Absolutely, yeah, and you know, I spoke to one, one of, you know, a lot of those high level sort of decisions that we've already made, but we can get even more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Um so why don't we go um. Quickly uh through with through our consultants um. So Alicia, you'd like to go? I don't think there's much open in your uh memo, but maybe you can speak to it quickly?
Sure, the main thing is just the environmental review, so it was classified as unlisted. And the board declared its intent to be lead agency, but uh that still needs to be circulated. So we can prepare that and send it out. It also needs to go to Harbor Coastal. So we can go to Harbor Coastal and come back, um but that's the board's call, so that that was the main thing. Just about the environmental review and I think other than that. Our, our comments have been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, great. And well, I think we'll come back to that at the end for our next, for our action in a minute. Um.
Let me just ask Alicia something for one second. Um on the fourth page of your memo. Um item five. It says that they need to submit a tree preservation plan. And the com- it says comment address, the applicant has submitted a landscape and tree protection plan. I'm. I don't think the answer is responsive to the. Question, like we're talking about two different things, preservation plan and a protection plan. So I'm not sure what this is referring to, if they've actually given us a preservation plan. It, I don't think there's a lot of trees staying on the, you know, on the site for uh that needs much protection. So can we just clarify that? At some.
Um. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can defer to to Susan and. Whatever tree protection and preservation is required.
That's, that's great. I just didn't want, I I just wanted the language to be consistent with with what we have and that's more Susan's area.
It's, I mean, at the very beginning, you read it quickly and tree preservation, tree protection, they're different, but.
It's a lot of, lot of tree P words, yes. Um. Also, and again, Alicia, I'm not sure this is a question if you might be for the applicant, for which I apologize. The two affordable units, who determines um an applicant's, you know, who's looking at that apartment, whether or not they qualify. By whatever criterion we're using for um the affordability piece of it. Is there? Somebody within the organization that owns the building that's gonna do that? Do you rely on an outside affordable housing group?
There, there was a little discussion of that in your memo, wasn't there?
The zoning code actually speaks to that and the administration of the.
Mm-hmm.
Uh affordable units and it actually depurs the town of Amerenak Housing Agency to um deal with the selection of. Who's going to be occupying those units and certainly the applicant will coordinate with that agency. And um make sure that the process outlined within the affordable section of the zone follows.
Right, cause it doesn't just happen once, it happens as people turn over. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Susan, we were sort of segueing to you and we also probably covered some of what you'll discuss, but we haven't heard from you yet. So do you mind just speaking? Uh to your memo, please?
No, but first to clarify tree preservation plan and tree protection detail. The tree preservation plan is the phrase given in the new tree law. For an actual separate plan that covers a number of different elements that are required from. Um grading contours to um tree protection. Um. And tree replacement. Um the tree protection is actually a detail. Showing, and we saw it with the last applicant, showing where on the crown of a tree that. Showing that the crown of the tree determines where the tree protection on the ground goes. So if you are referring to tree preservation, it's, it has to do with the plan. If you're referring to tree protection, that's really the protection. On every individual tree that appears on the a tree preservation plan. So I hope that helps clarify. This has come up uh before, it'll probably come up again, but that's okay. Um and yes, uh Seamus, the um. The items that I mentioned in my memo have already been discussed, that the building was moved back. And now is filled with. Evergreen shrubs, deciduous shrubs, grasses and perennials and climbing vines. Um but as I mentioned in my memo and the applicant's representative reiterated. That there is no room for um large statured trees in the front of the building. Um I also mentioned about the two offsite trees, which uh the board discussed. Um the non-native and invasive plants have been replaced with native species. And a, the discrepancy between the composite images and the landscape plan are addressed with a label on the. Composite images.
Great, thanks. Any, any questions for Susan, anybody?
I I had just a quick question, is uh English Ivy a native species or invasive species or what's the status of English Ivy?
English Ivy can be, but in our um climate, it is not considered invasive.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
And then we should just try to like in parallel to be efficient for future meetings, let's try to figure out the offsite trees, the village location for them. Um it seems pretty solvable, just, you know, the, we have a tree bank, maybe, so just figure out something that works well for that. Um. Okay, and then um. John Keller, maybe we can hear from you. I mean, I I think that. Michael Stein referred to a a long list of things that that is really just needs to be worked through between you and um I I don't know that we need a tremendous level of detail on anything. That um you know, that you'll track through and will ultimately see an update to, but uh perhaps you just give a status update or react to anything we talked about?
Yeah, no, I think Mike covered uh my comments. Uh there were really three major points, one.
Yeah, no, I think Mike covered uh my comments. Uh, there were really three major points. One was the stormwater piping. And just so it's clear to you, um, you know, typically your stormwater piping is piped under the ground outside. In this case, there's some basement rooms that extend into the side yard, which you really don't see on the site plan. Uh, so the piping actually has to go back through the building to get to the the street out the prospect. Um, so I suggested he uh meet with the building department and find out if there's any special piping they would require. Uh, because it wouldn't be the same typical piping that you use outside underground once it goes into the building. Because obviously, uh you you wanna make sure that pipe doesn't leak or flood the building, the lower levels of the building. Uh, also the manhole in the in the street, he obviously couldn't access it uh because of the depth uh to verify the size of the pipe and whether there's capacity there. So I suggested he meet with DPW. Uh, they probably have the information on the pipe and they can confirm that they're comfortable with the connection to it. Um. Second point was the retaining wall. The the parking area below the building is actually lower than the parking lot that is on two sides of the the property. So retaining wall is required to uh develop those parking spaces under the building. It's a, it's not a very high wall, it's probably three to four feet or less. Uh, however, it's designed right on the property line. Uh, I I requested that they design that wall at this time, because if they need permission from the adjacent property owner to build that wall, because the excavation may extend into it that we should know now uh before they receive the approval on the project. Uh. And then the the third point was the various phases of construction and how how access to the site will be performed. And in Mike's four different phases that he developed during construction, access is proposed from the parking lot next door. So they will need permission from that property owner to gain access to the site when it's being built. Um, he went through the pedestrian uh uh routing uh around the sidewalk with the utilities and so forth. My main question, which I don't think they really addressed in detail is is the deliveries. Uh, there's, I believe it was nineteen thousand yards of material that has to come off the site. There's gonna be a lot of trucks being loaded. Um, there's gonna be concrete trucks uh coming to the site. There's gonna be steel deliveries, appliance deliveries. Where are those trucks and equipment and materials gonna be staged? Um, you know, let's, I'm sure the board wants to know now whether there's gonna be um disruption of the travel lane and prospect. If that material is gonna be accessed or stored on the adjacent parking lot next door, or whether they have another plan for dealing with it directly on site. I just don't think that detail has been put into those phasing plans at this time.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Uh, one quick question for me, and I'll see if others have any. Um. Are you, are you or is your organization um prepared to help us with the green certificate lead type of assessment? I guess this special permit has kind of a standard for green um construction that I, you know, I think typically we get some advice from experts on aspects of the project. Is that, is that something you you feel like you can comment on?
Is that directed at me?
It is, yeah, unless there's anyone else who's uh, yeah, more.
I'm not sure if it's more appropriate for Alicia's office to address the green uh aspects of the project.
Yeah, Alicia, I wonder, and and this is just something we can follow up, but I think we're, we'll probably look for some um one, you know, someone qualified to just look at the that silver certification, the the green elements and kind of confirm that it's um you know, appropriate, I guess. Um.
Yeah, I guess there are other things we have to qualify for for the special permit, so maybe if uh if it's a, if it's Alicia's office, who can uh along with the attorney to look at the requirements for the special permit and make sure we're checking all those boxes. You're muted, Alicia.
You're on a car.
I, oh. I'm I'm sorry, I have a, I have a, I have a, I have a sick kid right here. Um.
Well done there.
Sorry, um, yeah, so there there are these, the green requirements in the code and it looks like the advocate was pretty thorough in addressing them. Um, and uh, yeah, when I'm so sorry.
Alicia, Alicia, let me pop in. This is Teresa. So, yeah, AKRF and I can look through all those requirements and just make sure that they're met, no problem. And we would do that anyhow as part of the secret review, so um, okay?
That sounds great, thank you. Yeah, I think we're, you know, typically we get some expert advice on each aspect, and this one's a little bit different, I think, uh than some of the most other projects, so that'd be great. Um. That is all that I have. Anyone else have any other questions for the applicant?
I'm just, I'm, I just wanna comment that um I'm curious to hear more about the whole traffic plan, like John mentioned. Um, I live in this neighborhood and there's constant foot traffic where you're proposing doing all of this work and I just, I think that kids might not cross, go up the street and then cross again, so I, you know, safety's obviously would be paramount, and I'll have lots of questions about that.
And um I can comment on uh some of colored sessions input on uh access deliveries. The applicant is currently um in discussions with Chase Bank, which is immediately next door, um to have an access agreement through the back of um our property onto Chase's property for deliveries, access staging, so anything that's going to be coming through the prospect will be linked. You know, to the extent we we had to and, you know, Allied Construction, so they can explain a little bit more if there's additional questions, but um I know the the goal of the applicant is to avoid that as much as possible so that we can make it as easy and and minimize the impacts to to the road and pedestrians and constructions going on, and certainly, once we have that agreement.
Okay. Okay, Kristen, anything else? Because we'll just kind of go on to our procedural next step here.
I I don't think so at this time.
Okay.
Great, yeah, thank you for a very thorough presentation, yep. Um, and so I think that our plan, uh and Teresa and Alicia um way in here if needed, but I think our plan here is to circulate the lead agency um which maybe is based on your memo, complete via thirty days, but uh that's a step and then to refer to HCZM, so um, we should we, should we take those one at a time uh for lead agency? Do we need a motion to do that, or is that just a a step that now occurs with the passage of time?
You, you don't really need a motion to do that. Um, uh, I think when you establish your intent to be lead agency, that just assumed that you would go ahead and do that. Um, but Seamus, there's no problem in making a combined motion to do the lead agency coordination and refer it to HCZM, that's fine.
Okay, so then um I'll just briefly, does anyone have anything else? Otherwise, I'm gonna, I'll, yeah, so.
My only question is, and I guess it's for Teresa. When do we have to start thinking about the public hearing for the special permit? At what stage does that start to move forward? Because there's notices and things for that.
Generally, we do that after it's been referred to the HCZM.
So, o- okay, so it's premature to do it though tonight to look at scheduling a public hearing?
Yeah, I be- I believe so, yeah. We, you wanna be in a position where you've done the coordination with the other involved and interested agencies and you have their comments. And you also have the comments from the HCZM, then you schedule the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, I think it would make sense to make the secret determination of significance and move forward with decision-making on the project. And of course, you're still waiting for some things to be submitted by the applicant, so you know, you want a complete application before you solicit people's comments, otherwise it gets frustrating.
Absolutely, thank you.
The review from Harvard Coastal and comments or a bold resolution of?
Consistency.
Consistency.
Um, comments from them, I think would be wise, at least before we move forward, just so we know if there's gonna be any changes. Okay, Kristen?
Yeah, so so I just wanna have a point of clarification there, because Harbor Coastal does only meet once a month, so if we're going before them once for comments and then we would have to return for consistency after um lead agency was established, I wanna make sure we're not losing too much time and and also unnecessarily wasting the board's time, so if we've um get comments from Harbor Coastal, let's say in January, um is it possible to be able to make a supplemental, Teresa, to the planning board requesting the next time we appear before them, it be a public hearing? Um, were those comments from Harbor Coastal can be considered as well as supplemental information from the applicant?
Um, yeah, you would, you would need a, you would need a meeting at the planning board to to call for the public hearing. Unless, unless the planning board right now is comfortable setting the public hearing for, say, the second meeting in January, but you know, I I hate to do that until all the information's been given to the planning board.
I think we need some comments from from HCZMC before we do that. Because then we're gonna be scheduling public hearings and and maybe canceling them.
Yeah, I I don't, Kristen, I don't think it's a good idea, yeah.
All right, so we'll proceed to Harbor Coastal just for a preliminary review. And then I'll return back before the board schedule a public hearing.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so then I I um I will um motion that we I I I think we're doing it this way, Teresa, right? So I'll motion that we refer the project HCZM and that we circulate uh lead agency.
Second.
Okay, uh so I'll vote yes, Cindy?
Yes.
Um, Richard?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Yeah, yeah, me too, thanks all. Yeah, why don't we, oh yeah, um. Yeah, let's, why don't we take a, we'll take a, commit a break, um and we'll start back up in government.
It's about nine fifty nine sixty.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Uh, maybe just.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, HCZMC, we used to only meet once a month, but we'd sometimes go till eleven o'clock at night, you know, we started at seven, well, you know that. We could go forever. That might not be good. Might not be good. Because it's tricky. I think, I think that's the most, well, never gonna zone, but I think that's the most difficult part for especially for someone new to a land use process. It's just so difficult.
Yeah, almost, almost every project that you get in HCZM is there for complicated reasons, right? Environmental proximity or something.
Right, very, I guess the jurisdiction has been defined narrowly enough, that's what, only what you get is meat and stuff, you don't, you know, swim for.
Yep.
I'm not sure that we should be getting swimming pools either, it's kind of silly.
Yeah.
But they haven't changed the code.
More than a half acre.
To give HCZMC weapons permits.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have anything to do but a weapons permit, and all we do is listen to what they have to say.
Yeah.
And and that's great, let them do it all. It's silly, but it's been literally like seven years, and no, no board will do that. So, it is what it is.
Good, so once we get Mallory back, we'll do nine fifty nine sixty in Amerenac Ave. Um, so we'll start that as soon as she is back.
You all have the proposed resolution in front of you?
Yes, if I know it's posted, so everyone can access it. Um. Okay, so uh applicant for nine fifty nine sixteen. Hello?
Evening, Chairman. For the record, Paul Notadorf Nelson, for applicants. Um. Nine sixty, Granic Avenue LLC. Uh, we have uh received a number of memoranda from your consultants, uh and they indicate that we have addressed uh the comments uh of the course of the last three or four meeting. And we have also received a compact closed resolution, uh with which we have no, no quarrel. Uh, so, in fact, we need to be thrilled if you would adopt it tonight. Uh, so uh if you have any questions, Diane Gomez is here, uh or her engineer, uh who can, of course, address them.
Okay.
For those of you who are new to the board, obviously, I'd rather not have to go through the uh presentations over the last several months. Uh, I hope you've been brought up to speed on that material. Uh, and it's a great project, you're gonna love it, so you're gonna be very happy.
So, um.
We've, we've, we've heard that before.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
So, yeah, great. I I don't think that we need to belong to this part, so um I I think that we, you've been with us a couple times, made made some changes over the course of that. Um, I think, why don't we just check quickly with each of our consultants? Uh, no need to go um into too much detail. We've had a chance to read your memos, which I believe um have have settled the comments, so, but let's just uh go through quickly. So, uh Alicia, nothing uh open from your perspective?
No.
Okay, and then Susan, I believe the same, based on my check mark here for you?
Yes, no comments, except to say uh thank the applicant for putting in three uh street trees that will mature and accent the area.
Definitely, yeah, thank you. And then John Keller, anything uh from your perspective?
The applicant addressed fully all my comments. They did a very nice job with the stormwater system.
Okay. And then with condolences to the person who has to do the three-point turn every now and then, uh anything from the planning board? Uh, any comments or questions or anything at this point from anybody?
I just have something on the resolution itself, but.
I think that's where we're going.
If we're ready for that?
Yep, let's, let's go to the resolution.
So on page two, the second whereas clause, I think the final Tarabella memo is dated December seventh, not December ninth. But checkmate.
Uh.
I.
Let's, let's just get it right, yeah. Um, December seventh, it's on the file name, yep.
Yeah, that's what I have. So that would be my only suggestion to amend the resolution.
That is correct.
Okay, got it. Sorry, took me a while. I found it.
I thought you were testing me.
No, I'm not. Thank you, Cindy. We don't wanna have the wrong. Thank you, Cindy. We don't wanna have the wrong date. Thank you very much.
And then you, uh, similar, the only, my only comment on the resolution, and it's not too substantial, but, um, there's a whereas, uh, clause in the middle of page two that leaves this meeting out, and I don't believe we did very much at this meeting, but would we refer to the fact that, um, or maybe, or is it covered elsewhere, just that this was the?
No, no, I'll add after October twenty-sixth and December fourteenth. Alright, got it, Seamus, thank you.
Okay. Um, any other comments on the resolution? Okay, so why don't we vote? Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So, okay.
We'll take Richard?
And how about a second though?
Okay. So then, uh, let's, uh, vote, um, let's go down the line, Bill?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mallory?
I think I'll abstain because I wasn't here for all of this.
Yeah.
And, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Great, yep, thanks for working with us and, uh.
Holiday, I'll see you next year. Another project.
Teresa, are we, uh, good on that?
Um, we, we are good on that. I have Richard moved it, Cindy seconded it, and we had four yeses and one abstain.
That's correct.
Alright.
Okay, so now we're gonna move into two administrative actions, and then we have one more project applicant. So, um, Bill, uh, we're gonna go to the Hampshire decision, so.
Okay, yes, and I'm, I'm gonna be recusing myself since I'm a member of Hampshire Country Club, so I will not be participating in the discussion.
Okay, and then Bill, we'll just come get you outside, I don't think this will be too long.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, okay, so we have, um, before us, um, a uh, decision to make on, um, whether to appeal the decision in the Hampshire case, um, where I think the planning board and, uh, the village are, um, named. Um, Teresa, we are probably just, we don't need to go into an executive session, um, I think the people have read, uh, or have had the opportunity to read the decision, and so we were just gonna motion, um, to appeal or not, and have to take a vote. How does that sound?
That sounds fine. I would, um, motion to authorize the appeal of the Supreme Court decision in the Hampshire matter.
Okay, uh, does anyone want to make that motion?
I would love to.
Well, we'll say Richard with the motion.
Second.
And we have a second, Cindy, thank you. Um, and so, voting Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mallory?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And we can go get Bill, I think, um. Correct?
That is correct, that's all you needed to do.
Okay. Um, so, do you, yeah, or I'll go now, if you want.
You should, you should have had one lock the conference room.
Nobody wants to go there.
Okay, welcome back, Bill. The next administrative action, um, and I think we do have this motel here, but, um, this is a one-shore road. A request to extend, um, the timeline by a year, which are, um, which we frequently get when the project isn't able to be, um, completed within the original timeline. Uh, at the request of this board and the staff, we got an additional memo that just clarified, um, that there's no changes to what was approved. Uh, it also seems like there's very little work left to be done, it seems like, to C-Wall or something, so. Um, does anyone on the planning board have any questions or anything? Okay, so then I think here, um, we just need a motion, uh, to grant an extension, uh, to the timeline.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, to vote, Bill?
On this one, since I haven't got much to go on.
There you go.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mallory?
Abstain.
And I vote yes. Teresa, okay, with that, three yeses, two abventions?
Yes, motion still carries.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, and so now we have one last topic. Um, I am going to, uh, recuse myself from this application at this meeting and subsequent ones. Uh, this is two-two-two Union Avenue. Uh, this is house that I own, uh, and a project that my wife and I are working on together, so, um, what I'm gonna do is, um, recuse myself, I'll leave, and I've asked Cindy to take over as chair for this application and the rest of the meeting, um, so. Um, thank you guys. See you, yeah, see ya. Okay, and Teresa, anything else that I need to do? Otherwise, I'll just pack up and head out and hand it over to the rest of the team here.
Nope, nothing here, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much.
I'll, I'll wait till you get out the door.
Sure, I'll be very cool. Yeah, good night, everybody.
Night.
Alright, so this application is for two-twenty-two Union Avenue, um. The applicant is seeking site plan approval for the renovation of a single-family home with an addition in the rear. Um, as many of you know, we don't usually get single-family homes, um, here at the planning board, um. But that has been determined in this case, um, three-six and three forty-two dash seventy-five. So if you'll introduce yourself and we'll move along.
Good evening, my name is. So, um, we are before you today because we are over surface coverage on the lot size, we're over point five acres. So we have to, um, come before this board to get approval. So what we're looking to do is, uh, construct an addition in the rear of the home. Approximately a thousand square feet of disturbance. Again, we're proposing some earthwork, so, um, on a, uh, more than point five acre area, so we need to seek, uh, planning board approval. Um, all these setbacks, um, are zoning compliant, so we're not seeking any variances at all. And we're not proposing to remove, to remove any trees from the block. Um, and we do have some letters of support from the neighboring houses. I did read the comments from consultants, um, I don't have any questions, I won't answer the questions that they have to make at this time, and I'll answer any question that you might have.
So, I'm, well, let me, let's, let's let the consultants go through, um, and maybe that will clarify any of the questions that I have, so, um, can we start with AKRF, Alicia?
Hi, sure. Uh, right, so as the, um, architect said, it's, it's before you guys because of the lot size, and there's not, not that much more else to say, there's no wetlands, it's sufficiently far from the Mamaroneck River to not trigger any sort of additional review. And it's a type two and requires BAR approval.
So I'm confused because there's been representations that it's a thousand square feet of disturbance, whereas on your memo, it talks about area of disturbance being eighty-seven hundred square feet of disturbance?
I think that came from the EA, let me.
EAF has, has a thousand square feet, so.
Okay.
Maybe the difference is, there's actually.
From somewhere.
There's actually the footprint of what the changes are to the structure, and then there's the area of disturbance, which is much larger, larger, because that's the staging area and the construction entrance, and is that, i- is that maybe where the discrepancy is?
Is that the area of the house?
May- maybe John can address that?
Yeah, I don't know if John, did, John, did you?
It's my understanding, the, the actual disturbance, ground disturbances, is limited to a thousand square feet.
Okay.
Whereby it does not require a SWIP. Um, there's a six-hundred-and-ninety-one square foot increase in impervious surface, very small increase. The applicant's required to mitigate the stormwater for a twenty-five-year storm. He's actually, uh, mitigated it for, right through the hundred-year storm.
Terrific. Alright, so, so, but when we talk about disturbance, we're talking about both the whatever building is, whatever the addition is, the footprint that it takes up, along with the area that deals with the construction including the entrance and.
Those numbers don't make sense.
Right, but I'm saying, area of disturbance is not just the footprint of the additional square footage of the house. It normally is more than that. So I'm just, can we clarify that for the, for another meeting? Because it's yeah, I, I just, I just, I want the paperwork to be consistent and have us understand, you know, what's, what's going on.
Yeah, there's a, um, there's a faint line there, it's, it looks faint to me. Um, where it says area of disturbance going all the way around the proposed addition there.
That's correct. So we have the stockpile for the soil, and that's what we're putting the cold tech units to capture some water well.
Okay, and all of that, including the expansion, is less than a thousand square feet.
Is that right? Is that?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, the additions about a thousand square feet plus where you dig around it, and then the, um, the cold tech area and the stockpile, the whole area is probably where the silt fences, obviously, we're not gonna be doing work around that whole area, but that's a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, so let's, let's just, you know. Well, let's, let's see if we can be a little more specific, you know, in a future submission, um, cause again, you'll have a construction entrance, I'm gonna assume you'll be, no?
Construction entrance is gonna be the driveway.
Okay, so you're using the existing driveway. Okay, great, let's just get this, so it's gonna be a little bit more, fine, okay.
So I, I do have a do have a question, um. So under the, the site plan, uh, approval requirements does say that, uh, SWIP is required for site plan approval. So if it's not required and I I'm just asking, I, I don't, I don't understand that.
Uh, if, if disturbance is less than one thousand square feet.
So, okay.
State a SWIP is not required. You still have to mitigate the stormwater impacts. Uh, but it's not a full SWIP.
Understood, thank you.
Although the, the details on the plans are are pretty much, you know, up, up the pore of a SWIP, you know? Uh, you know, it covers your, your erosion controls, it covers your stormwater, uh, but it's not a requirement. Although the applicant has actually designed the stormwater for a hundred-year storm, he went beyond the, uh, the requirements of a twenty-five-year storm.
So, so this sounds like we need to definitely nail down area of disturbance and make sure everybody's on the same page with that.
We should, yes.
I mean, obviously, it's not gonna change the system, it's just gonna change the paperwork.
Yes.
If I'm understanding that. Okay.
So the area of disturbance I have on the plan is six-hundred-and-ninety-one. And that's where I came up with the addition in the two areas, so can we use that number? Six-hundred-and-ninety-one?
I thought the addition was a thousand.
No, so the addition's two stories, so I can't count.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a five hundred square. Seven hundred and fifty, or something. The area of disturbance, this, here's a problem, we have a porch that we're knocking down, we're not adding support which is bad, because it was already there. So I, I let that increase out.
If that's, if that's the way that can be done, and I'll rely on our consultants to advise us on that.
John, so there, there's a screen of the ports that we're knocking down, so I'm taking credit for that, for being there, and then adding the addition to, to that number, so I come up with six-hundred-and-ninety-one of an increase.
That's an increase in impervious surface.
That's correct.
Okay, but, uh, but your disturbance, it, it should be included in your disturbance number.
So the disturbance number is less than a thousand square feet, so I'll get that, that exact number.
And it, the disturbance should include the installation of the cold tech units and any stockpile area.
Okay, so I'll get those.
It's whatever ground surface you're actually disturbing.
Yes, unrelated to impervious, it just has to deal with how much of the site is having activity, being disturbed.
Yeah.
Okay. Sometimes the words just mean what they mean.
So, just to be clear, just to be clear, there, the, if you look at where the silt fence is, that looks like it might be approaching the larger kind of area, but that does not necessarily constitute disturbed area, only the part where you actually dig.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or store, or.
Well, that's why, that's why I was asking for clarification, cause for example, the stockpile area is not digging. But that's disturbing, but getting it to there is sort of I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not up on the, uh, technical, how you calculate those things, that's why I'm asking.
Alright.
I think, I think we encourage uh, applicants to make sure that they're giving themselves enough room to move equipment around and include within the area of disturbance the, the areas where they're moving materials, storing materials, driving trucks, and in, and installing call tech and other stormwater devices. So John, have I missed anything?
No, I think, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Were you, were you, were you removing vegetation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, alright, so that will be figured out. Shall we move on to, John, did you have anything else to, to discuss about stormwater at this point?
Uh, no, I had some comments, they were technical comments that I asked for some additional information. And the only other item I, I asked for is clarification on the grading. Doesn't appear that there is any regrading on the site. Um, if there is, it should be shown, uh, if it's not, there should be a notes placed in the drawing that there is, is no regrading, and that the existing grades will remain unchanged.
Yeah, so for the record, we're, we're not changing the grades, so I'll add that note to the plans there.
Great, thank you.
Great. Alright, Susan, let's move on to landscaping.
Um, there, there are very few items, uh, based on the fact that the trees that are near the area of disturbance will be protected um, as a group. Um, my only comment was, and you can see from the photo on the left, that the tree on the right closest to the house is, appears dead. And based on the tree preservation plan requirements, if any trees are to be removed, a tree preservation plan is required. Um, you know, it's, it's already dead, so I don't know how the planning board might wanna, um, move forward with that. Um, other than that, I was curious about the construction entrance because that would affect the trees at the rear of the driveway, could, could affect, I should say, and, um, you know, it, that's about it.
Okay, so.
So we're not removing the tree, we're gonna evaluate and see is, if it is dead, then just at that time, we're not planning on removing the trees. The construction entrance is gonna be the driveway.
Right, and you're staying right on the driveway, and that's no, okay. Alright, um. Well, so I don't think we've had this situation before where there is a tree that might be dead. Teresa, do you have any guidance for us on this? I mean.
Well, they're not, they're not seeking permission to remove it. And, um, it appears to be dead, but we don't, I feel like it's the princess bride, you know, is the tree dead or not? So I, I think the appropriate thing would be to, um, ask the applicant to verify if the tree is alive or not, and advise us again if they plan on removing it or not. Um, it sounds like they would prefer not to remove it, and, um, you know, I don't, I don't think there's anything that requires us to have people remove dead or dying trees. Uh, Susan, is that in the, in the tree preservation law? I mean, I don't think there's anything in there about having to remove trees.
Um, no, not that I am aware of, no.
Okay, so it's, it's an odd situation. Okay, so it's, it's an odd situation, but if they want to give it a chance, you know.
Right, and if in some period of time after the construction, during the construction, they decide they need to remove it, they'll go to the village, get a permit and go through that process.
Right, right, right.
So then it's off our desk. There are points taken off of that.
I was gonna say, in, in some sense, if, if the tree is truly dead, it would be better to deal with it now. Easier certainly to just address it upfront, but that's really up to the applicant.
Yeah, we'll evaluate it because we're not sure if it is dead or not.
If you have an arborist sign off that it's dead, if the tree permit is just wait, you can go ahead and remove it.
Thank you.
Okay, one more question I have. I think this property is part of the Army Corps of Engineers' plan, and because it abuts the river, we're all expecting that plan to help with at least a little bit with flood mitigation here. I believe the river is going to be I don't know what they're gonna do with it at that particular site, but I believe the Army Corps will be grabbing property along the river, and I think this property was one of those that was on the list. So it just might be worth investigating, and I think this board would be interested to see, you know, if, if that's gonna change the backyard or the property size or the contours.
Or it will actually, honestly, part of the property.
Eminent domain. They'll pay.
Well, hold on. So they'll lose square footage on the property?
I, I don't.
It'll be under a point.
I knew that's where you.
I, I can't promise that. It'll take forever. I, they're not ready. The money is in Washington. I'll call you in the morning. Sure. But I just want you to be aware of. Okay, great. Anybody else on the planning board have any comments, questions, suggestions? Okay, so the only thing we're doing tonight, besides seeing you for the first time, is classifying this for secret purposes, and because it's a single-family home, our consultants have recommended a type two. Anybody have any? Okay, so can I get a motion to type this as a type two? Richard, can I get a second?
Second.
Bill? All right, Mallory?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, and then Board of Architectural Review is next. Teresa, we can, we don't need a motion for this, right? We can just.
They can just go. That's right.
You can just go to BAR. Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
As always with the caveat, if anything, after BAR approval were to change, you know, on the this plan, you would have to go back to BAR.
Yeah, there's not usually much that changes at BAR that affects, you know.
The other way around.
Exactly.
If it came back here, we changed something.
Great. Now, I think in the, I'm sorry, that's we're done temporarily. I think we do have a scheduled meeting on December twenty-eighth. I think if we had to have that meeting, we do have three people who could attend. Right, I'm not really assuming anybody's gonna turn it around that quickly with the holiday in between. So we won't cancel that meeting unless we don't get anything.
I'm having a major surgery on the twenty-first, so I will not be able to attend on the twenty-eighth. No, that's what, that's what Seamus said, that you and Bill were not able to attend. Oh, you knew that already. Okay, I was trying to make sure. Okay. Okay.
Don't want to cancel the meeting because I don't have that.
Any vote is legal.
Great, okay, so you guys could still have it, but you have nothing on the agenda yet. If there was something here that we could finish up and not wait till January eleven, we would do that. Yeah. Okay. Really.
You know, around, but, okay. So if we're not having that meeting, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Teresa. It's been, it's been such a pleasure working with you. I know after the first of the year, there's, there's a change in the guard, so thank you. I hope our paths cross again in the future. We really appreciate your professionalism.
I really enjoyed working with the board, and it sounds like you're gonna be strong going into the next year.
We're gonna try. We're gonna try. So that said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, don't be shy now. Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.